And we should be all set.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening. I am calling this public hearing to order at 6:00 PM in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40, the Boston Wetlands and the Boston Wetlands Ordinance, Boston City Code, ordinances, Chapter 7-1.4. The Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public evening, uh, public hearing this evening on June 26th to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's public hearings will be followed by our regular meeting. And in accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access this meeting through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at CC@Boston.gov. For the record, I am Michael Parker. I chair the commission. Uh, could staff please identify themselves?
Elena Idemary with the Environment Department.
DeeDee Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Great, thank you. Now call, uh, the role of Commissioners present, Commissioner Sullivan.
John Follows.
Excuse me, Commissioner Long.
Nick Long.
Commissioner Condon.
Condon to England.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Richmond.
Alex Richmond.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda tonight is a notice of intent for DEP file number 0061991, Boston file number 2024-016 from Weston and Sampson Engineers, Inc., on behalf of the town of Brookline, for the proposed dredging of Willow Pond and bank restoration at Leverett Pond, located at 217 Jamaica Way in Jamaica Plain Resource Areas or Inland Bank, 100-foot buffer to inland bank, land underwater, excuse me, bordering land subject to flooding, 25-foot riverfront area and 25-foot waterfront area. This has been continued from the May 1st, 2024 hearing.
Excuse me, I just have to recuse myself from this one.
Thank you. Okay, um, so this has been continued, as I said, uh, and I think what we were looking for is some progress on the water quality cert. So if the proponent is here, could you let us know, um, what the status of that is?
Uh, good evening Chair Parker and the rest of the Boston Conservation Commission. Uh, my name is Sam Downs. I am the project engineer, uh, for the town of Brookline, uh, representing, uh, the town, uh, for the continuation of this hearing. Um, I am here to provide updates, um, on the, uh, project at large. We, first, I would just say that the, following the hearing on May 1st with this board, uh, we did also meet with the Brookline Conservation Commission, uh, on a public hearing that followed the one with this, uh, board. Uh, and that hearing was closed and the order of conditions was issued by the, by the Brookline Conservation Commission on May 28th. Directly following the last hearing of this project with this, um, commission, uh, the 401 Water Quality Cert, uh, certificate was filed May 7th, um, and the Chapter 91 was also filed. We've hosted meetings with both, um, the 401 Water Quality Team and the Chapter 91 Team. To date, no, um, project, no major project changes have been asked for. I'll start with the 401 Water Quality Cert. Uh, we met with the reviewer Derek Standish. All documents were provided. He asked for the EIR certificate. He asked for the letter of NHESP. The public notice was, uh, public, was republished and to date we have had no concerns of the project from the 401 Water Quality Team. They are working with the Army Corps of Engineers to determine a appropriate review time or a reasonable review time, um, as they work together on this project. But again, uh, in meetings with him, uh, with that team, no major, uh, changes have been requested. Similarly, for Chapter 91, we met with two reviewers from their team on two separate occasions. Again, just asking clarifying questions about the project and no major changes were requested. There was one minor, uh, request from their team, which was, uh, in our plans, we did not call out ordinary low water. That has been resolved. Thanks, or at the request of Chapter 91, those plans were updated just to, to reflect the ordinary low water. Again, um, no, no changes were asked for by the Chapter 91 team. Um, and we just this morning, uh, were asked to publish, publicly publish the project using Chapter 91's template, in the local newspaper before July 9. So, uh, to date, we have received no major feedback despite multiple meetings with both 401 Water Quality Team and the Chapter 91 Team. And I am here tonight to ask the commission if they would consider, uh, closing the hearing order, uh, and, uh, providing us with a draft order of conditions as we did with, uh, Brookline's Conservation Commission.
Okay, okay, sounds good. So it sounds like, uh, the real concern was the water quality certification. Sounds like you're through that process and, um, you're not getting any feedback that we changed the project in a way that, um, we would, uh, want to, um, that would change it in a way that our review would change. Um, so that sounds good. We do have a, um, excuse me, order of conditions, uh, that Elena has drafted. I don't know if she shared them with you. Elena, have you been sharing with Sam?
Um, um, excuse me, the, uh, let's see, I believe the latest version that was shared, uh, was almost the final one. And the only updates that we made were based on, I believe, Commissioner Herb's comments from the last hearing where the project appeared, um, where we specify that any invasive, um, removal that is done beyond hand, uh, hand pulling or cutting, uh, will require herbicide application approval by commission staff. So that's one of the additions. And then there are three conditions that we added to the end of the, um, to the end of the conditions that were specified by MISA, which, um, are noted in their letters. So they, those were just the, the conditions that they specified that they required to be included in the order of conditions in order to have their approval on the project. Um, other than that, no other changes have been made.
Okay, so Sam, does that sound like, uh, if, if you're agreeable to those conditions, we can actually issue them this evening?
Uh, yeah, the town, the, myself and the town are definitely agreeable to those conditions and, um, based off the sidewalk that we had previously. I know that I was anticipating that those might be some of the conditions. So, uh, we would be, uh, very happy if an order was issued tonight. Um, and of course, it goes without saying, we would come back to the, to the commission if there were any changes, uh, to the project, any major changes.
Great, okay. And thank you for your diligence. Okay, so it feels like, uh, we're ready to, uh, move this on. So I'll ask, uh, do any of the commissioners have any questions?
I had a quick one. The, I know that there were complaints from Brookline residents about, um, the water being six inches low in the whole muddy river after the dredging project, probably due to the Charles River being down six inches. Will this project lower those mud flats, if you will, such that there'll only be water up in this area?
Uh, hey, John, um, good, uh, good to hear from you. Um, so this, uh, this project will actually have an outlet control structure that was agreed upon with, uh, Chapter 91 as well as the other agencies. So we've actually, uh, we've, we've seen the issues that have occurred in the other areas and we do not want to have a similar one. So we have set an outlet control structure that will maintain the appropriate water levels in the, in the pond.
Great. All right. That's all I had.
Thanks, Sean.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing, uh, nothing. Elena, any, uh, raised hands from the public?
I'm seeing no hands.
Okay, so at that, I would entertain a motion to, uh, close this hearing and issue, uh, an order of conditions.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries forward. Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much to the commission for your time tonight. I appreciate it. Have a good one.
Okay, we're going to, um, go a little bit out of order because of the, um, issue we have with the quorum tonight. So we're going to go to, um, next item request for a determination of applicability, uh, from the Boston Water and Sewer Commission for the proposed, proposed construction of tide gates and replacement of water mains as necessary on Beverly Street, Central Boston Downtown, Lewis Street, East Boston, and Seaport Boulevard in South Boston, resource areas or land subject to coastal storm flowage, 25-foot waterfront area and 100-foot buffer to coastal bank. Commissioner Sullivan?
I am, I am going to recuse myself because I, I am employed by the Boston Water Service. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Uh, my name is Xavier Jenny. I'm a design engineer, senior design engineer of the Boston Water and Sewer Commission. I'd like to thank the, uh, the board member for their, uh, the hearing, time limit to completing this application and for their, um, patience and response in, in regards to our proposal for determination of applicability. So, uh, basically, do we have any questions? Have we reviewed, if you have the commissioners reviewed our project and do they have any questions on the matter?
Yeah, um, do you have, we have a presentation here. We generally, um, uh, generally the proponent walks us through it, uh, quickly. I don't know if you want to do that. I see there's 17, no, there's not 17 slides. Um, did you just, can we just run through the slides very quickly here?
Sure, if I can have access, there you go. Uh, do I have access to them? What's the deal? Let's see.
No, they're right up on the screen. You should see them.
Okay. Uh, the first side is, the first slide you have, uh, that you refer to is, uh, generally, that's the general description of where the locus of the locations are of our tide gates. We're actually putting four tide gates, uh, in and around within 20, in and around Boston Harbor to prevent, uh, amyloray flooding issues and otherwise. That's the first slide. The second, there's a big X to the second page. That's basically because of, uh, that's out of the jurisdiction. We're placing one in tide, we're placing one tide gate structure, uh, beyond, uh, the 100, we're about 150 feet away from the, uh, from the buffer, from the buffer, from the, uh, high water line and out of the buffer areas. There, there you go. We're not applying for that. However, there's three other tide gate locations that are of interest and of concern for the commission. So as courtesy we're presenting here, because all the work is within, um, within the buffer zone of the commission. Our location on, uh, on Beverly Street. Uh, if you see the, um, probably go to, uh, uh, you probably have to go to side three. Now there's the outfall and there's our location of our, our, our structure. Basically, we're putting it out and, and we're putting installing, uh, a manhole structure adjacent to their existing structure on our pipe to put in these tide gates. Again, pre limit to, um, limit the inundation of the area and otherwise. Um, it's in the buffer zone, but the big, big question is, it's in a paved parking area. Uh, we, we intend to, uh, once the tide gate is installed and otherwise, we intend to repave the area, uh, and, uh, restripe it. It's on DCR property, uh, prior to their, uh, specifications and otherwise, specification of requirements.
Okay, David, uh, for all of these, I assume they're pretty similar. Um, what is the, um, what's the amount of, um, alteration? How much, how much space do you take to do this?
Uh, we, basically the limit of this, of the excavation is, uh, is, uh, 16 by 10, but about 190 square feet basically for, put in the excavation support system and then basically where their, our foundation for these, uh, tide gates are. The tide gates themselves are 12 by, what are they, 12 by?
16.
12 by 16. Yeah, so that's essentially the limit of the, of the underground. It's an underground facility on our structures. So it's a man, it's a chamber on our existing structures. So there's no displacement of, uh, the resource area. It's essentially then, or disturbed. It basically is in the buffer zone.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the, uh, the Beverly Street. Do you want to continue down to, uh, the Lewis Street? The Lewis Street section is, is similar. Uh, again, it's a, it was a pretty complex, all these areas are very complex with, um, many interests or otherwise, but the similar thing here, there's very limited, there's very limited spaces where you can put these things are. Um, you can, so will they be as effective? So what we've done is we try to get it as close to our, to our existing drainage structure and not in, in, um, impact the areas, um, the area, uh, not impact the areas as minimal as possible. Again, there's installation of underground structures on our existing facilities. As you'll see, this is a lower street site. Again, everything's in a paved way or on a, on a sidewalk. So basically, we're going to be, but there's going to be a couple manhole covers. The only difference that you'll see from the street here is a couple of manhole covers on that concrete sidewalk. Moving forward, the next page is, uh, for, that's Lewis Street. Moving forward, we have the Seaport. Yeah, the Seaport area is very similar. Again, it's very complex. The, the underground utility locations are very complex in this area. They require a lot of work. We're doing, um, a specific placement of it. Uh, if you'll notice, see if there is, you can notice some of the, oh, we go to the next slide. There's a very limited place where you can put these tide gates for them to be effective and to, so we can reclaim as much capacity as we can. This is a approximate location of where it is. We actually, we put it sideways. The latest revision is to put it sideways, but it shouldn't impact that, uh, industry action or otherwise. A lot of utilities, a lot of private, uh, and, and street furniture, streetworks being impacted. But again, there's very specific places where we can only, where we can only put these things.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Um, Elena, uh, what do you have on this?
Yeah, so I think the, um, the only question that we still had was just wondering about the approximate timeline for when the work is expected to begin.
We'd like to begin as soon as possible, as soon as bid. I'd like to get it out and start to bid within the next 30 days. Uh, my guess is the, uh, the further the DEP and otherwise, it's probably going to take about 30. We expect it's about 30 days per site. Um, if they, if the contractor employs multiple crews that can get it all done, it's also dependent on the BTD. Are they going to let us work in the middle of summer on the Seaport? Uh, no, probably not. Maybe weekends or maybe not. Nonetheless, we're anticipating this work to be wrapped up by, uh, winter of this year. So we'd like to complete this as soon as possible. It may start within, um, 40 days after contract is awarded. We'd like to wrap this up in this season. It will take about 30 days per site at each location. That's what we anticipate. Can we do that? Will they use, uh, multiple crews? We'll see. Um, but that is an option and it's at the convenience. They can do it all and, you know, we'll see. It, it's up to the, the contractor is not, we don't have a contract yet and we have not presented the options and requirements, but they may have on their schedule.
Great, thank you. That was all we had.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Long?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, David. Um, just one question was more so, from my knowledge, how do you maintain these tide gates typically?
Uh, right now, it's our, all of our tide gates installed on a monthly, uh, on a monthly planning and maintenance schedule. Basically, our crews go out there, they circle around there and they locate them, pick up any debris, look at the inspection, see what kind of shape they're in. Uh, see if they need any, uh, fittings, uh, increased fittings or oil to fittings or otherwise. Clear debris, clear excess stuff, clear sediment as needed. Um, these, these tide gates will be on that set schedule. Uh, we mentioned that, uh, in some of our correspondence, but that's our, our intent is to, once they, once we install them, we're going to be on a monthly sca, on a monthly schedule for, one, to determine if there's any debris and sediment in there. If so, we'll remove our floatables. They may have an ability to catch more, any air floatables. And then two, if, uh, if they're in good shape, great. If not, it's going to be, it's basically a monthly, it's a monthly thing.
All right, thank you. That, that's really it for me.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Chair Parker. Um, David, we're looking forward to these tide gate installations and, um, you know, that they're being done for a good purpose. So that is definitely good. I heard the word complex a couple of times, which gives me pause. I assume you're looking for a negative determination here on the RDA, correct?
Uh, yes, we, well, we believe, uh, in our opinion, uh, these drainage work activities are exempt from the act as described in 310 CMR. Uh, was it section 10.02, 2B, 21 and 2, we therefore seek a determinative, determination of applicability whether the activity is subject to jurisdiction of the Wetlands Protection Act and any municipal wetlands ordinance or bylaw of Boston. So a negative and, um, and we'd be off to the races, shall we say. Well, that's the next step. Next step is going through the DCR permits and otherwise. The permitting is onerous so far. It's, I mean, it really is. The utilities are complex. The permitting is complex. That's why we're starting at the simple things first. And, um, a negative determination of applicability will, will move us forward, um, post-ace, we'll move it forward and, um, uh, to maintain our schedule for installation of this year. Otherwise, we're just going to be, well, I'd like to get off of my desk as soon as possible, but we'll see. We'll see, we'll see what you guys want to do and ladies want to do.
I, I appreciate that. I mean, the intention here, I think, I mean, uh, nobody here wants to create an onerous process, I'm sure. At the same time, there is some wisdom and reasoning behind the permitting process. Um, I appreciate it can be a problem in terms of the delayed causes, another complication that come from the delay. What is your assessment of the impact of the tide gates on, in, within the jurisdiction area?
Uh, it really is going to be minimal. I mean, what, it's, it's, it's going to impact as far, mostly it's going to impact, uh, the tourists and businesses. And that's where we're going with this. That's what we're doing this. Basically, uh, you know, speaking of Seaport, uh, the neighbors, the neighbors next to and, and the region, uh, was it the St. Rita's Tower? Those are very, some of our sophisticated citizens in, um, in that area. Uh, therefore, that's what we're doing, the I's and crossing the T's and going through all this stuff. As necessary, we, um, we, we, uh, we went out to the abutters and we had nearly a thousand of abutters we had to notify. So like I said, we want to get everybody on board, get the support and, uh, and move it forward. The direct impact should mostly be pedestrian traffic, some, uh, transportation activities, probably some, um, yeah, basically just transportation and pedestrians. Uh, there is one in Lewis Street has a water taxi. Uh, the harbor masters are aware of that. The mass port folks are aware of that too. So again, you know, rule number one, make the boss a good. Rule number two, no surprises. So if we're going to hear into those, uh, we'll be in good shape. And again, uh, thank you for the good questions. Any others?
Just one more. So you're talking about the disruption that's caused during the installation. What about the impact post installation?
Um, I, I don't understand, like, uh,
you're doing the project in order to have an impact, right? Obviously a positive impact. And we're, we're here trying to make sure there will be no negative impact. I just want to hear an assessment of what any risk of negative impact is and, and, um, I guess basically I'm looking for some assurance that for a negative determination of applicability, the negative impact will be minimal or zero.
Uh, there really is no negative impact here. I mean, uh, basically we're retaining capacity in our drainage system. We're basically, we're, we're adding capacity for our, to, we're adding capacity to our drainage systems to, um, to limit, uh, localized inundation. So, um, I don't see the, by not having one, basically the, the subject areas are more prone to local inundation and minor flooding. With these tide gates and solves, there should be, that's what we're seeking to, to limit. Uh, localized inundation, localized flooding, especially, um, the garages and some of the low lying areas in, in adjacent to our proposed tide gate structures. I don't see a downside for this. I, I don't elucidate or edify, um, it may be on my understanding, but please, if you find one, let me know.
A very quick follow-up question. How will you monitor to make sure there isn't any unintended negative impact?
Unintended negative impact. Uh, let's see, we'll rely on our citizens and, uh, the abutters and, uh, our look, our personnel and, um, and you. Uh, if there is stuff, bring it to our attention.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks, Chair Parker.
You also said in, um, uh, response to Commissioner Long, uh, you're monitoring the outfalls, um, monthly?
Yes, yes, sir. To my, to my, to the best of my knowledge and ability, yes, that's we are. That's our, the main schedule is.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Richmond?
Uh, yeah, I had a question that was just very similar to the one that was just asked and, and, and was discussed during Commissioner Long's. Since you don't know who the contractor is yet, and you're not sure what the contractor, you know, what the, how many teams that person is going to put up and what those teams are going to be doing, um, is there a plan for monitoring this work? So that in fact, um, you can tell sooner rather than later if something isn't going right?
Well, there's going to be a construction schedule. So excuse me, excuse me a second.
I did.
Yeah, I don't know. It's the, the guys are working on the, um, the clinic who's in there. Continuous monitoring is going to happen by our inspectors, uh, basically by our construction inspectors and otherwise. So they're going to be out there at the sites on, on, on a schedule for, for the, um, as laid up on the contractor's schedule. If they're working on Lewis Street between these dates and this dates, we're going to be monitoring and having a construction inspection there. If they're working in Seaport within these dates, we're going to be there. If they're working on all things simultaneously, that's will require a little bit more coordination and otherwise, but that's where the continuous monitoring is going to come place. Basically from a construction department or construction inspectors.
So I, I thought I heard you say that each project was going to take about 30 days. Did I understand that?
Uh, yes, uh, one's a little log of it, yes.
Um, so in that 30-day period, uh, how much monitoring do you think is it going to be, once a week, once, twice a week, once every two weeks? Do you know yet?
Yeah, they're going to be monitored every time the contractor is out there.
Yeah, but if they're going to be out, out there for 30 days, does that mean that somebody's going to be there every day?
If there's, if there's construction activity, they, they will, somebody will be there.
Every day?
Yeah.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah.
And presumably the, the inspector who is there is going to know what, what it should look like, like, what it should look like and what it is looking like if it's not right, correct?
Well, yeah, and that's, that's a good point. You know, they, they, they should be, as part of our, our kickoff or, or, or project transition, we're a design team to the construction phase. Basically, what we're going to do is we're going to walk them through, all right, this is what's important. These are the typical, these are the costly items. This is what's important. This is what's concerned. It's also printed on our plans. What are the requirements for the Conservation Commission? Uh, absorbent booms, silt sacks, make sure everything, there's no air and sediment control, make sure it's a, it's, it's, um, uh, a clear access ways provided. So those ones are on the plans. And then two, our contractors, our inspectors are going to be versed in what to look for. So you say you have an air absorbent boom or something like that, or the catch passes haven't been cleaned. That's going to be problematic and we'll remedy that. We are a contractor, we'll remedy that ASAP.
Okay, and, and so I know I'm, I'm, I'm asking this again, but I just want to be clear that, um, in the event of this work, there will be an inspector from Water and Sewer at these sites, let's just say every day or every other day while the work is going on.
To my, to my knowledge and my understanding and the, and staffing abilities, when there's construction on, we're, we're, we're supposed, we are supposed to have a construction inspector on site.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, Mr. Chair, is there a way, uh, for that to be part of the order of conditions?
Um, well, we're going to, it's not an order of conditions. Uh, it's conditions attached, Nick. Yeah, yeah. But anyway, um, we would be attaching our standard erosion control conditions. Um, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we can insist upon a staffing issue like that. Cause we've run into that before with, uh, BPS, uh, if you remember for the, um, Park, I think it was over in East Boston. Um, I mean, I'm taking Dennis at his word that there'll be someone there every day.
Oh, I, I'm not, I'm not questioning his word. I'm just saying that if, if it's in writing somewhere, then I have much more confidence that it's going to happen.
It is in writing. It's part of our contract documents.
Okay.
It, I'm, if there's activity going on, there has to be our inspector. If they're doing work on our facilities, there has to be an inspector on site. That's part of our standard, our boil play contract stuff and it just happens. There can't be, again, in a, that's what it says in our contract. Um, how many inspectors? How many inspectors do we have? The outsec, I don't, that's beyond my uh, beyond my purview and my um. That's beyond my purview. I, I don't know what these things.
Well, you've answered the question and I thank you for doing it.
Well, good question. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Okay, Eleanor, anybody from the public?
Not seeing any raised hands and nothing in the inbox either.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, so with that, I entertain a motion to issue a negative determination of applicability with standard erosion control conditions.
So moved.
Give a second. Thank you. Commissioner uh, Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries for nothing. Okay, David, good luck. Uh, sounds like it's challenging and I can only imagine with the boss you have over there, how challenging it is.
Uh, it's, it's, it's a treat. Every day, every day's a holiday, every meal's a banquet. If you want to buy or have any questions on these uh, uh, tide gates, please don't hesitate to call or ask me. We'll reach you, I can arrange a show up to you when we get them installed during construction, and we'll take it from there.
Fantastic, thank you very much.
Commissioners, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay.
Chair Parker, I have to sign off.
You're signing off, so let that, thank you very much for your uh, patience and diligence in getting here.
Uh, am I free to go?
You're free to go.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chair Parker, I'm signing back on.
Okay, thank you. Is David free to go?
Oh, he's free to go.
Fantastic. Okay, next item on the agenda is a notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six. One nine nine three in Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero one eight. From Epsilon Associates Incorporated on behalf of Seaport G Titleholder LLC and Seaport F Retail Owner LLC. For the proposed soil, soil borings, test pits and installation of groundwater observation wells located at eighty five Northern Ave in South Boston. The resource area is land subject to coastal storm flowage. Um, who's here on behalf of the uh, proponent?
Good evening.
Hi Chair Parker, Eric Rexford from Epsilon. The proponent is actually here with me as well, Amy Prong, and I think she's gonna lead us off with a, with an introduction. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, sorry. Um, thank you to the commissioners and your sta- and staff for your time here today. My name's Amy Prange. Vice President of Development with WS Development. We're affiliates of Seaport G Titleholder LLC and Seaport F Retail Owner LLC. We are here, as you mentioned, to request an order of conditions associated with soil borings and test pits that we intend to complete. On Seaport blocks F and G uh, in conjunction with a future development project. So I'll turn it over to Eric to walk you through the application, and I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of the owner as we proceed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Uh, Dee Dee, I think you're driving the slideshow. I have just a couple of slides that help orient people to the site. Um, USGS locus here. We're talking about eighty five Northern Avenue, which of course is in the Seaport District. Uh. The project site is that red block uh, sort of in the middle there. If you go to the next slide, I think I have a couple aerials that give us a bit of a better picture. Um, yeah, so we're talking about two parcels, uh, parcel G and a portion of parcel F. Together, they comprise the, the limit of work. Next slide, please. Again, just a little bit closer here. Uh, Northern Boulevard to the north, Pier Four Boulevard to the east. And Seaport Boulevard to the south. Again, portion of parcel F and parcel G. Next slide. Um, nearly the entire project site is land subject to coastal storm flowage. Small area in the northwest corner, um, that is outside of um, a hundred year floodplain. Uh, otherwise, the, the remainder of the site is land subject to coastal storm flowage. Uh, and that's the area in which uh, we intend to advance the uh, subsurface exploration program. Uh, shown on the next slide, if you can advance one. Um, so twelve test borings, sixteen geo probes. Uh, four test pits uh, and two groundwater observation wells. I'll note that uh, one of the probes and one of the test pits is actually outside of jurisdiction. Uh, but everything else will, will occur within land subject to coastal storm flowage. Uh, with that, I'll turn it back over to the commission. If you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Great, thank you, Eric. Okay, um. Eleanor, what do you have on this?
So um, we were just wondering about the logistics, given the fact that it's a pretty busy area and how you're planning on working around um. Just the different pop-ups that happen there, Chair Parker.
Yeah, she wants to make sure that the um, uh, what is it? Who's over there? Trillium Cisco?
Cisco, yeah.
Is not gonna be disrupted during the uh, pendency of this action.
High priority for me as well.
Whatever.
Um, we, we intend to, to do the borings and the test pits when the Cisco activation comes down and, and the projects are parking lot. And we'll work around kind of active parking by working with the parking operator to close off certain spots during the day.
Perfect, thank you. That was all, thank you.
Oh boy. Okay, um, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, on the uh, the borings, are you doing them for geotech reasons for pile support or something? Or are we looking for possible oil that may have come out of the uh, one fifteen KV lines?
No, it's to help with the design of the foundation system.
Okay, and did they remove those pipes themselves, the uh?
Yeah, so the, the pipes are capped at the property line. The oil was drained before they were capped. Um, but we do anticipate that we'll need some remediation on site when the actual um, lines come out of the ground.
Right, and none of those borings go right where the pipes were, are they?
No, I mean, for, yeah, fortunately, we know exactly where they are and we will avoid them.
Okay, that's all I had.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Long?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Richmond?
I haven't, I have any questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, Amy or Eric, how long is the work expected to take?
Uh, sort of depends on the order of operations, but it could be up to thirty days.
Okay. Um. Eleanor, I don't see any raised hands, do you?
No raised hands and nothing in the inbox either.
Okay, okay. So with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing and issue, well, to issue the order of conditions and then close the hearing.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries for nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, um, next item on the agenda is a request for an amendment. To the original order of conditions for DEP file number zero zero six one seven eight nine in Boston file number. Twenty twenty one dash zero two three from Ty and Bond on behalf of Venstar Electric Company, DBA EverSource Energy. For the proposed installation of a new underground manhole vault located on Springdale Street in South Boston. Resource area is uh, land subject to coastal storm flowage. Um, do we have a presentation on this? I guess we do. Yeah, there we go. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Uh, yes, Chris Newhall uh, here uh, working for EverSource Energy. And with me tonight is uh, Tracy Damski with uh, our consultant Ty and Bond, who will uh, walk through the presentation here on what is proposed.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Um, so we currently have an order of conditions for the installation of a new one hundred fifteen KV transmission line. Between Andrew Square Substation and the Bar Street Substation. And um, if you go on to the next uh, slide, we'll uh, describe the work that's being proposed here. So this is in the vicinity of uh, Springdale Street, which is a, a private way um, next to the, uh. Park area. And uh, we require the installation of a new manhole. Within the limits of previously approved work within the land subject to coastal storm flowage. So the highlighted line, um, that's a kind of a darker gray line. That's the limit of land subject to coastal storm flowage here. And uh, the area that's uh, demarcated in with a, with a red callout is where the new manhole structure is proposed. Um, so this will result in some minor re- we, we need to regrade the slope behind that anyway. Due to the uh, installation of the, the jacking pit for the transmission line. And um, that grading, instead of going back exactly um. To grade, it'll be slightly modified, but there's no fill proposed within land subject to coastal storm flowage. We just need to have a flat work area or. The manhole needs to be um, installed so that the, it's. Um, it's flat, so that uh, we need to make sure that the grades are flat for um. Future operation and maintenance of the facility. And then if you go to the next slide, there's just a, we have a brief description of why this is being required. Um, so. There's a maximum distance between manholes that's required for electric infrastructure. And we have a manhole on um, the other side of the ninety three and MBTA corridor. And uh, which was manhole one, manhole two, which is outside of the jurisdictional area, needed to be relocated. As um, we got into construction to avoid a, a large public shade tree. So that extended the distance, so we needed to have another interim manhole located um, in between those two manholes. And this was um, the, the best location for that. And uh, again, so the work is within the approved limits of disturbance for the project. We talked about the minor regrading of the slope respiration behind it. There's no change in flood storage uh, volume or stormwater management requirements. Um, there's, you know, this is a disturbed area, um, so there's no changes in providing wildlife habitat function. Um, and obviously we'll continue to incorporate the conditions that were part of the original order of conditions. And we had um, an amended order of conditions for some of the work for that, actually for moving the um. The pit and some of the, the jacking pit and some of the work associated with that previously. And that's the end of our presentation for today, so open for questions.
Thank you, Trace. Um, Eleanor, do you have anything on this?
Uh, yes, just a quick note for the record, uh, apologies for this. We had listed the addresses being in South Boston, and I believe it's actually in Dorchester. So that was a clerical error on our part.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, I, I see your pit over there, and do you have other utilities exposed in that pit? And how far away will this new manhole be from the nearest utility?
Um, I don't believe that we've got other uh, utilities exposed in the actual pit. Um, and uh, I would need to confirm from the drawing that uh, I guess the, the vault is. Uh, what distance that is from other utilities, but the uh, the engineering design uh, was, was done so that. Uh, it could be accommodated, I guess, with all, you know, other uh, you know, proprietary utilities required setbacks.
So you, you've been to the site and you see the pit, there's no, right, there's some water lines that run right beside there, and it's a twenty-four inch sewer line that runs right there. And they're not inside, they're not inside your pit.
That's correct. I don't know uh, if they are inside the pit. I don't believe they are. I believe we had to move the pit back sufficiently far to avoid those water lines, which is um, one of the reasons that we had to. Come back to the uh, to the commission uh, previously to um, to get that pit location moved.
Alright, um, and did you submit those, this proposed manhole location to the water and sewer? Cause I know they signed off in the first set of plans. The change gets submitted to them?
Uh, I, you know, again, that's not under my purview at the company. I can certainly confirm that with others um, who are responsible for uh, the Boston Water and Sewer Commission. Um, you know, permitting process uh, and, and provide that information to the commission.
Yeah, no, that would just, if you could just check for the water and sewer, just don't want conflicts later. Uh, that's trying to avoid.
No, understood, and I think that's, you know, one of those things that um, you know, until a, a lot of times you actually get into construction where. Plans of record show things uh, and you're trying to accommodate them, you know, kind of in your current plant set. They don't always uh, end up being in the exact location, so some slight modifications do need to occur during construction. But I will certainly circle back with our uh, engineering team that's, that's working with uh, Boston Water Sewer to make sure that this has been reviewed and approved.
Alright, thank you. That's all I had.
Great, thank you. Um, Commissioner Long?
Uh, no questions, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Eleanor, I don't see any raised hands, do you?
No raised hands and nothing in the inbox either.
No emails? Okay, great. So with that, I would entertain a motion to um. Uh, issue an amendment to the original order of conditions for DEP file number zero zero six one seven eight nine in Boston file number twenty twenty one dash zero two three.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries for nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you all for your time tonight.
Okay, there have been a number of continuances, continued uh, our notice of intent for DEP file number zero zero six one seven seven two in Boston file number twenty twenty one dash zero one zero. DP file number zero zero six one nine six one in Boston file number twenty twenty three dash zero five one. DP file number zero zero six one nine eight seven, Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero one two. And finally, DEP file number zero zero six one nine nine zero in Boston file number twenty twenty four dash zero one five. The commission will now begin its regular meeting. Uh, next item on the agenda is a request for a certificate. Certificate of Compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one seven seven four for the demolition of a residential building. And construction of a new multifamily residential building located at eight three nine Saratoga Street in East Boston. Resource area is land subject to coastal storm flowage. Eleanor, what do we have on that?
So we still have not received an update from the proponent on this project. We'd recommend that the commission hold off on a vote.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next one is request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one eight three seven in Boston file number. Twenty twenty two dash zero three seven for the construction of a four-story building associate, with associated parking and landscaping located at seventeen seventy eight Columbia Road in South Boston. Uh, resource area is land subject to coastal storm flowage. Anything on this?
Uh, staff conducted a site visit uh, both last week and earlier today, uh, because last time we had noticed that there was some constru- uh, excuse me, some construction debris on site. And a few other items. Uh, we checked on that today and everything seemed to be cleared up. Um, I believe that there is a representative from the team on the call. The only outstanding question that we have for this. Um, is that we noticed that there were a few um, covers on. Sorry, I'm blanking on the exact structures that are on the outside of the building, but they seem to be a bit loose. And we were wondering if that could be um, something that could be resolved. And I believe that Austin.
Who, who is it? Is Austin uh?
Yeah.
Representative, okay.
Good evening, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Sure, yeah, Austin Chardy with McKenzie Engineering Group. Um, and the reason, so there was a couple of basically roof drains out there that weren't, didn't have covers on them. And I came up at the site visit. I believe the, you know, the general contractor did put covers on those. But the reason they may not be finalized is that I believe there is a roof drain connection that has not been installed yet. That is basically proposed to be installed, so it's kind of a temporary fix, but they can certainly secure those down in the meantime until those roof drains get connected. Um, it's basically they're coming off the roof and will connect into those drains. Uh, they just haven't been installed yet.
Oh, that sounds like it might be part of the work that was authorized though. Eleanor, is that correct?
That's, yeah, Austin is, sorry, um, I, I think that that sounds right. I just wanna confirm that.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, yeah, so we'll have to wait until the complete installation before we can issue a certificate of compliance.
Okay, um, I guess, well. I guess, yeah, I guess, I mean, it was part of the proposed site, so um.
Yeah.
Uh, alright, yeah, we can, I'll talk to the contractor and get the roof drains.
Yeah, it would have been something we discussed about as far as stormwater drainage, so unfortunately. Now, if you can get that, yeah, if you can get that uh, loose end tied up, uh, and then just um, let Eleanor know, we'll take it up when it's done.
Sure, no problem.
To clarify, you don't have to refile. Um, we have all of the materials that we need for your filing. We would just need to conduct one more site visit um, before. We've recommended the commission vote on it, so um, we have all the needed paperwork.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for the EP file number zero zero six one five seven seven. For the construction of a six-story hotel and reconstruction of Blackstone Street located at Blackstone Street. for the construction of a six-story hotel and reconstruction of Blackstone Street located at Blackstone Street in downtown. Uh, land subject to coastal storm flowage is the um, resource area. Eleanor, what do you have on this?
Staff also conducted a site visit um, for this site last week and there are some photos for the commission's review. Uh, based on the materials they submitted and based on the site visit, we would recommend that the commission issue a certificate of compliance for the work.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from any of the commissioners? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one five seven seven.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye, aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries four, nothing. Thank you. Uh, last item on the, next item on the agenda is uh, administrative updates. Uh, Eleanor, what do you have to update us with?
Yes, so um, in the folder is an emergency certification which we issued for work done near the Chestnut Hill Reservoir. Um, the work was done or is being done rather uh, by Boston Water and Sewer Commission. MWRA uh, made a declaration of a public safety emergency because there was water that was overflowing whenever um, there's heavier rain was overflowing from the street and causing runoff and sediment to enter the reservoir. Uh, this reservoir is part of MWRA's emergency drinking water distribution system, so they um, thought it was important and we agreed uh, in in that, in this instance, to resolve the matter through an emergency certification. They understand the timeline and our understanding is that they'll be able to complete all of the necessary work within the thirty days. Um, we're happy to answer any questions, but at this time, we're coming to the commission requesting that uh, you ratify the emergency certification if you feel comfortable doing so.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan, any questions?
Yeah, I don't think, I I can't vote to ratify this, can I?
Yeah, it doesn't sound like it.
Yeah.
We can come to you again in two weeks' time.
Yeah, and maybe in two weeks' time, it'll all be done and you'll be talking to different stories.
Exactly. Um, while we have it, Commissioner Long, any questions?
Um, did they say when they first noticed this? Or like how it was um, how they were notified? It it might be in the materials, but I was just wondering from you, Eleanor.
They, that's a great question. Um, I don't remember who it was who initially flagged it for them off the top of my head.
The DCR did. It said it's a walkway for DCR for the for the public. And there was a gigantic hole in the walkway, so they called the MWRA and said it's not us. And you know, a couple of good agencies talking who's on first, so it took, it took two weeks. Um, and so the water and sewer said, we'll go fix it.
Great. I I was wondering if it was like a chronic thing or if it was something that came up all of a sudden.
It, uh, well, apparently it may have been going on for a while and nobody knew, well, DCI knew about it, but they weren't telling anybody. And they were trying, they were trying different methods to protect it and they couldn't do it. So they're going in and building new basins, new manholes, infiltration manholes and other things to see what they can do.
And I was thinking about all the people who walk on that path every day, who may have noticed it, probably maybe didn't think much of it. I don't know.
Oh, no, they thought a lot about it. They kept you on this DCI, which we thoroughly enjoyed. But anyway.
I feel that was, I feel like that was directed at me, Commissioner Long. Um, when Eleanor brought this up, I said something like, huh. I remember that when my daughter was a freshman at BC, she's going into her senior year, um, walking around the reservoir. Um, and I never saw any water flowing, uh, but it was definitely caved in. So it's been, it's been three years at least. Um, but I never thought anything of it. And now I'm ashamed and embarrassed.
Well, it's just, it's part of the landscape, you know, yeah.
Yeah.
It's there. Um, and it, yeah, just interesting to think about how these things get noticed um, and reported and who they get reported to. Um, thinking about things people might see at Jamaica Pond, for example, or, you know, where their water bodies. Um, but this is obviously a bigger concern with water supply. But yeah, that that's all I got. Um, yeah, thank you, Eleanor.
Okay, um, Commissioner Richmond?
I I I couldn't possibly add to that conversation.
Thank you. And I'm glad you didn't. I'm I'm embarrassed enough. Okay, um, thank you, Eleanor. Um, what else? Anything else?
Uh, that was it. Just again, apologies for the quorum oversight.
Oh, yeah, no problem, no problem. Okay, um, the meeting minutes, um, we're not going to be voting on tonight. So I think that leaves us with our uh, favorite motion of the evening, which is motion to adjourn by acclamation. Any objections?
Add a new photo? Or is that the one we always use?
Wow, that looks like it's from Charlestown.
I updated it like two months ago, but I guess it's still kind of new.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nice, okay. Okay, so I think we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, take care. Bye bye.